This conference will now be recorded.
We're ready, Mayor.
No, I was told that Sue was chairing this for Budget Committee.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're ready. Ready, Chair Holden?
Oh, Sue, we don't hear ya.
I saw her a minute ago.
Yeah, Sue, we don't hear you. You're muted.
She seems to be unmuted, but we can't hear her.
I know.
Yeah, I see her now.
We can't hear you. Sue, you don't have your microphone on.
Too much Remon Trigger, no doubt.
Sue, you can call the phone number. If you have a cellphone, you can join to the phone as well. I'll give you the number if you want to write it down. Okay. It's 646... Oh, you got it? Yeah, if you're joining to the phones, Sue, you have to mute the computer side so it doesn't have a feedback.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, there we go.
We can hear ya. Hey, a little echoey for me.
Yeah, it is here too.
Turn your speaker on the PC down as well.
I didn't hear that.
You know the speaker on your PC? Just probably bring it down to zero as well.
Okay, I've got it muted and turned all the way down. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I only had two audio to choose from on here. Neither one seemed to work for this app, but normally I do online meetings in here and it works okay. So now let's call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Members Holden.
Here.
Summers.
He's muted.
He's there. He's muted.
Thompson. Keller.
Here, I'm just on the phone.
Brenneman.
Here.
Vernig. Coburn.
Here.
Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Bessie Johnson. I see you. Kellum.
Here.
Kanopa.
Here.
Olson. I see him.
Dan.
He's there.
Yeah, and Sykes.
I'm here.
And I think Thompson just showed up. That means 12 members present.
Here.
Okay. All right, so we'll hand it over then to Carol and Don.
Let me, Chair Holden, if I could just step in for a quick second. This is Peter. Just to say good evening to you and to Mayor Kanopa and the Budget Committee. It's quite an understatement to say that a lot has happened since we last met. Tonight, though, we're fortunate to have Carol Samuels and Don Hudson with us. I had a chance to see their presentation at the League of Oregon Cities Summer Conference last summer back when we used to be able to get together in person. And they presented a session that was entitled "Property Tax 101: The True Story of the System That Will Make You Want to Laugh and Cry," mostly cry. And with a title like that, I don't know anybody that didn't want to attend. It was a presentation that I found very impactful. Though part of the impact is communicating how very complex the system is. So complex that there's no way that I feel that I could describe it to you. Now, we have a slight modification to the agenda this evening. Because there's so much to cover under the subject of compression, we have tabled the PERS discussion till a later date. So tonight, we'll just be hearing from Carol and Don on compression. So without further, anything further, let me thank you again for being here and turn it over to Carol and to Don.
Well, thanks, Peter, and good evening, or I guess it's still afternoon, everyone. My name's Carol Samuels, and I am wearing my best property tax nerd outfit, which I don't know if you can see, as is my partner in crime, Don Hudson. Don, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, or good late afternoon, everybody. Before we're over with this, I'm sure it will be evening. It's great to be here. I am the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director with the City of Tualatin and been the Chair of the League of Oregon Cities Finance and Taxation Committee for the last four, five years.
And I failed to share about me, but, you know, I feel like everybody already knows me. Hi, Bessie. I, in my day job, work at Piper Sandler, which is a financial investment bank providing financial advisory and underwriting services to municipalities. And we are currently the City of Albany's financial advisor for bond issues. So you might ask why I have an obsession in a nerdy kind of way with property taxes. And what Bessie has heard me say more times than I can count, because I too, with Bessie and Don, serve on the Finance and Tax Committee for the League of Oregon Cities, is that back in 1997, when our property tax system was forever changed by Measure 50, I was actually the lobbyist for the League of Oregon Cities Finance and Tax Position, which means I bear a certain amount of responsibility for our property tax system, for which I have forever felt guilty. So I have spent the past 20-plus years trying to change it without a huge amount of success, except I have recruited people like Don to help me on this, you know, windmill-tilting effort. And part of our effort is to provide as much education as we can, because the only way we're going to change the system for the better is if we can get the word out about how twisted and unfair it is. So without further ado, I am happy to bring up the presentation, but I'm not sure, Jorge, do you have it? And are you shifting it to us, or?
Yes, Carol, I do have it. It's available. And I gave a mouse and keyboard to Don, so he can just take control of it. Can you see it? Let me share it. Let me just... Let me share it. And here we go. You should have a keyboard, a keyboard and mouse, Don.
Okay. So, Don, how about if I just tell you when I'm ready?
... explicit nature, viewer discretion is advised. Here's an amazing act, here's a tremendous act, here's a startling act, the amazing, thrilling, the greatest, spectacular, incredible, exciting, wonderful world thing, the most unusual novelty.
Yeah, sadly, I'm not sure the audio is coming through that clearly. So we may have to dispense with it for purposes of this, but it will whet your appetite for the next time Don and I do this presentation in person, because we do have a lot of fun sound effects here. So, in any case, what are we going to cover? Well, we're going to go and take a look at the history of our property tax system. We're going to start with Measure 5, which is one of two property tax measures that were passed by the voters. And sadly, we are still living under both of them, even though in some cases, they don't play very nicely together. It's one of the reasons our system is so messed up. We're also going to talk about Measure 47 and 50. We're going to talk about the impacts. And then we are going to recruit all of you for our next steps in trying to fix the system. On the next slide.
I would like to invite you to take you on a straight.
So what is the purpose of the property tax system? Well, for the most part, people and businesses, hopefully, pay property taxes to local governments in order to... I cannot see this screen, so I'm going to put on my other glasses. Almost as nerdy. So you pay your property taxes to the tax collector, which in Oregon is each county. The tax collector, or the county, then distributes those monies to schools, cities, counties, special districts, and local governments then spend that money on educating kids, on roads, on hospitals, on firefighters, on police departments, et cetera, et cetera. That's the purpose. Next slide.
Do I got to be awake? I got to stay awake through your part, Carol? I'm good, go.
So the elements of a good property tax system, if you go to economic theory, is actually not that different from, you know, a table of elements in chemistry that I'm sure we all remember. But the first thing you want in a property tax system is one that's stable, so that you know what to expect, so it isn't volatile. So taxpayers and governments alike can predict what's going to happen. The next thing you want is one that is equitable, i.e. fair, to one property taxpayer based on some metric against another. The third thing you might like is that it's adequate, so that local governments can actually provide the services that their citizens want. Fourth thing is that it's comprehensible, so that, you know, when people look at their property tax bill, there's some rhyme or reason to what they're paying and why. Finally, some level of predictability would make a certain amount of sense, so that, again, when you're budgeting, you know what to expect. Next slide. So, um... When... We seem to have skipped a slide. Maybe it was in here, maybe it wasn't. But the bottom line is that on all of those metrics, Oregon scores poorly. So in order to understand how we got to its poor scores today, it's really helpful to go back and look at where we started. So prior to 1990, in fact, for a really long period of time, for decades prior to 1990, we had a much, much simpler system than we have today. Property taxes were based on a levy-based system, meaning that you at the City of Albany would have come up with a dollar amount that you needed to operate the city. And then you would have submitted that dollar amount to the county, and the county would spread that dollar amount across all property value within the city based on the market value of that property. So if, for example, you needed a million dollars and you sent it to the county, the county would then divide by their calculation of what the market value of all property within the city would be. Say it was a billion dollars. And the rate per thousand, which is a million divided by a billion, would equal a dollar per thousand, would be what each property owner would pay. So it was very straightforward, and it started with the dollar amount you needed in order to achieve your purposes. Some jurisdictions had what was called tax bases, which was an authorized amount that automatically grew by 6% each and every single year without any necessity to go to the voters. So it was a, honestly, pretty sweet system for those that had tax bases, because for the most part, revenues grew faster than costs. And if that was still insufficient, you could go back to the voters and say, "Hey, could you please provide an increase in our tax base?" And then that increased base would allow you to grow at 6% thereon. The difficulty came, and some of you who have been in Oregon for a long time probably remember this, when those jurisdictions that did not have permanent tax bases relied on temporary serial levies. Someone is waving. Is there a question? Or are you waving?
No, I just wanted to say that was us.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't know that. And I should interrupt to say, you know, I know we've got a pretty big group, but if you have questions as we go, you know, I'd like to try and answer them while we get there. So let's try it that way. If it doesn't work, then, you know, if there's so many questions, maybe we could use the chat function, if there is a chat function. So, anyway, what happened to those jurisdictions that did not have permanent tax bases, and there were many school districts in this position, was that they relied on these temporary serial levies. And then when the serial levy expired, they had to go back to the voters for new approvals. And there were school districts that were closing down in April, because they hadn't gotten voter approval for a renewal. So it wasn't a perfect system, but it definitely, for those that had tax bases, it definitely was easier to understand and provided adequate and fair distribution of tax burdens. Next slide.
I'm getting there. My dual screens causes problems. Like that, so it jumps ahead.
Yeah. So one of the things that has driven our tax history more than anything is school funding. And I'm sure you all have seen this in the legislature even to this day, that the discussion over funding schools tends to dominate all discussions about public finance in this state. And it was no exception when it came to the whole topic of property taxes. So prior to Measure 5 and Measure 50, property taxes accounted, on average, for 70% of local school funding. So again, you had a situation where you had some districts that had robust funding and others that relied on these temporary serial levies. And even those that had permanent funding, sometimes their permanent funding was at very paltry amounts. And this table here gives you a real-life example of what life was like for two different school districts pre-1990. So the first example is Brookings Harbor. Brookings is on the south coast, where there are a lot of retirees who often are not that eager to vote for school levies. They had a tax rate of $6.65 per thousand, which resulted in a funding level per student of just under 2,600. Contrast that to a district that's closer to home. Pleasant Hill is in Lane County, just outside of Eugene. They had nearly twice as much funding per student, and their tax rate was a whopping $28.25 just for the school district alone. That did not count any of the overlapping jurisdictions. Okay, so how did taxes get calculated? Well, this is an oversimplified example. But as I said, you started out with the tax dollars that the city and the county, and it would've worked the same way for the school district, needed or had authority to levy. So let's say, in this case, the city had a $1.5 million tax base. The county had a $2 million tax base. And let's say the real market value of the city was $200 million, whereas the real market value of the county was $300 million. So when you divide $1,005,000 by $200 million, you get a rate of $7.50. And for the county, a rate of $6.67, which leads to a grand total of $14.17. And again, other overlapping jurisdictions would have added on top of that. So how did that affect each property owner? Well, in my example, you had House A with a market value of $50,000, House B with a market value of $100,000, and Target with a market value of $30 million. In each case, you would multiply each times the composite tax rate, $14.17. And shockingly, House B actually pays twice what House A pays. Doesn't that seem rational? Hold that thought, because that's...
Yeah, we'll get to that.
... what works now. Was there a question? Okay. So what prompted the change? Well, largely what happened was, those of you who have been in the state for many years probably remember, in the 80s, we were in the middle of a pretty deep recession. And that meant property values actually did not appreciate much. But those jurisdictions that had tax bases saw repeated 6% increases, which meant that those increases caused exponential growth in property tax bills that was not tied to appreciation in property values. So tax rates went up. And as a consequence, in 1980, the average tax rate statewide was just over $19 per thousand. By 1990, that had grown to nearly $27 per thousand. And of course, yeah. And of course, there were external factors as well. In the late 70s, Prop 13 passed in California. And there were a lot of me-too efforts in Oregon throughout the 80s to try and limit the growth of property taxes. All of them failed because of one key consideration.
I'm as mad as hell, and I'm not... I'm as mad as hell, and I'm not going to talk this anymore.
You're still mad.
... about the nonsensical ravings of a lunatic mind.
So... In 1990...
They've jumped ahead.
That's okay. In 1990, Don McIntyre, the guy on the lower left, who was a gym owner in Gresham, put together Measure 5, and it was approved by a 15... a 52% margin. Oftentimes, people think, oh, you know, it was... It was eastern Oregon, or it was southern Oregon that approved it. Nope, Measure 5 was pulled over the edge by Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas Counties, all of whom voted yes. So if we want to blame anybody for our property tax problems, it's those of us who live in the metro area, even though I voted against it, I'll note, and Don didn't live in the state, so it's not his fault either. So, again, it was inspired by Prop 13 in California, but it was pretty different. And it had one key ingredient that made it more acceptable to mostly metro-area voters, since they're the one that pushed it over the edge. That was different. Next slide, please. So here's the way it was set up. It established a maximum tax on a rate-based system applied against market value. It introduced the concept of $10 per thousand for general government. That would be cities, counties, and special districts, including park districts, library districts, fire districts, et cetera. And $5 per thousand for education. So here's the key ingredient that made a difference to the voters. You might say, oh my God, $5 per thousand for education? That's a massive cut, remembering back to Pleasant Hill, that was levying $28 per thousand. But the way McIntyre got voters to feel okay about it is he said, "Don't worry, the state is required to pick up the shortfall." Now, did he provide the state with any extra money to fill that massive hole? He did not. So it made people feel okay about, oh, lowering property taxes, because someone else is going to pay for it, without recognizing that the someone else is all of us in our... without recognizing that the someone else is all of us in our income taxes. And our income taxes were already distributed to other purposes. So small problem there. Next slide.
Getting there.
The other thing is that he phased in the education rates over five years. So it didn't go to five bucks all at once. It started at 15, then it ratcheted down by 250 a year until it reached $5 per thousand five years later. Again, his emphasis was no worries, the state is going to fix this. So in a matter of a couple of years, it completely shifted the burden of funding K-12 education from local property tax and property tax owners to the state. There were some aspects of that that were not bad, one of which was equalizing. So you know, once the state took control of funding education. And really, as you can see in the graphic below, it used to be that almost 70% of K-12 dis- of funding came from local property taxpayers, whereas 25-ish percent came from the state to completely the reverse. Now the state is responsible for about 65% of school funding. And when the state controls the purse strings, what happens is the state starts making the rules for how their money is going to be distributed. And honestly, I think this is one of the good things that came of the property tax measures. The state opted to equalize funding for all students throughout the state, regardless of how much was coming from local property tax owners. So that definitely helped students in more impoverished districts. The problem, of course, is that since we didn't give the state any more money, where they equalized was way below the funding level that a lot of school districts had gotten used to. So there was a lot of lowest common denominator funding going on. And still going on to this day, although the corporate activity tax that the legislature passed in the last session has definitely made a difference. Okay, I'm ready.
Carol, this is Sue. On that previous slide, the, the bar on the left didn't total 100%. So there was like another 7% of funding coming from somewhere. Is that right?
Yeah, I suspect that's federal.
Okay.
Okay. One of the things about measure five that made it much more comprehensible is that they weren't changing the overall framework of property tax application. All they were doing was setting a cap on how much could be levied. So we still had real market value. We still had a levy based system where you took the amount of the levy, you divided by market value, you got a tax rate. And then you compared the resulting tax rate against the measure five limits. If the limits were exceeded by existing property taxes, then you introduce the notion of compression. And we're going to look at an example in a slide that shows you how that worked. But tax bases could still increase by 6% annually. And everything worked pretty smoothly, except not only did you introduce compression for the first time, but you also got into a scenario where one jurisdiction competed against another for room under the cap. And unfortunately, that's an experience that Albany also knows all too well. Because every time one of your overlapping jurisdiction raises their tax, if you're at the limit, it causes a depression in the overlapping jurisdictions taxes as well. So we've got a couple of examples of that in future slides, particularly in Don's section. So don't worry if that's not making sense, but let's look at a pretty simplified version of this. So we have exactly the same city and county. And despite the fact that over the passage of time, presumably the city's tax base would have grown by 6% per year. We're going to ignore that just to keep the numbers simple. So we have the exact same tax base. We have the exact same real market value. And we have the exact same effective tax rate of 750 for the city and 667 for the county. But you'll note that 1417 is just a wee bit above $10. So that would be compressed pro rata. So for example, you'll see in the compression statistic, the city represented almost 53% of the overall tax burden. So their compression was higher than the counties, such that now the new tax rate that would be applied to the city's taxpayers would be $5.29. And the county's rate would be $4.71, so that it didn't exceed $10. On a house by house by target application, again, we're assuming the same value numbers. So House A, 50,000, House B, 100,000, Target, 30 million. But now the tax rate that's applied is $10. So House A still pays half of House B. That's a positive. But the previous tax that would have ended up with the city was $208 higher for House A, $417 higher for House B, and a whopping $125,000 higher for Target. This is the beginning of where we are really shifting a lot of the tax burden to the residential side of the ledger away from the commercial and industrial side. Next slide, please. Okay, but despite the fact that this was a significant cap, particularly in 1990, and in a couple of jurisdictions, it was very onerous. Nevertheless, throughout most of Oregon, the nineties were the reverse of the eighties in terms of the real estate market. All of a sudden, Oregon was super hot and property values were going up like gangbusters. So if you think about the implication of the cap, because you are dividing by actual market values, that causes your tax rate to go down if your value is growing more than 6% per year. So your numerator might have grown at 6% per year. But if your denominator was growing faster than that, that actually caused property tax rates to go down. And in many cases, to go down below compression levels at all. So taxes went up, people got irritable, and Bill Sizemore came to town. So as you can tell from the previous photo, Don McIntyre and Bill Sizemore were not buddies. They both had the same overarching goal of reducing property taxes. But let's just say there was a fair amount of ego on display. And McIntyre thought his measure was perfect and Sizemore didn't. So there was a fair amount of this going on. And remember when I said I was there when all of this was going down at the state Capitol? But it started in November of 96 with measure 47, which was approved. And the whole notion that Sizemore dreamed up, the story goes that he got a box of crayons and wrote it on the back of a napkin. I only think that's sort of maybe not true, but it read like that's the way he devised it. His overall notion was to keep the growth of property taxes to 3% per year. So it was approved. It added something called the double majority. Again, a relic that thankfully is in the rearview mirror because we repealed it in 2010. But it basically said, you can't get new taxes unless you get both 50% plus one of those who show up to vote yes, plus you had to get 50% of registered voters to turn out, which meant that no voters actually had an incentive to stay home. So that was bad too. And the legislature took really yeoman steps to try and take this measure and write implementing legislation for it. And what they concluded after months of hearings was that it made no internal sense. And so in trying to keep the spirit of measure 47 alive, they redrafted it as measure 50 and they threw it back on the ballot in May of 97. And it passed. So it was a fundamental shift from the whole way we had done property taxes previously in that we moved from a levy based system where you identified the dollar amount you needed. And that's what you got to one where it was based on rates. The city of Albany, just like every other taxing jurisdiction, was assigned a permanent tax rate. Note, it is permanent, has not changed since 1997. And the method by which they came up with your permanent rate was they looked at what you were levying in 96, 97, then reduced it by 17% and then divided by 90% of the previous year's real market value. Okay, if you're confused, I understand why. It was, you know, seemingly completely arbitrary. But the idea was we are not going to allow you to collect dollars that you collected last year because we think those dollars are excessive. And furthermore, we are not going to allow you to apply it to the entire value that previously had been in existence. So it introduced this new concept of assessed values. And then said those assessed values, which back in 1997 were equal to 90% of the previous year's value. Okay, so they were lowering the value for each person, could never grow more than 3% per year. New properties are now brought on at a ratio of AV to RMV. So this is a fundamental difference between our system and very misunderstood. Our system and the system in California is that our system never rejiggers ever. So whatever your value was in 96, 97, it is that value today inflated by 3% per year. There is a small exception for major remodels. It may be rejiggered at that time, but it never converts to market value. Unlike in California, when you sell a home, it goes to real market value. So you can imagine after 20 plus years of real market value doing this and assessed value being this, you know, constant slope 3% per year, that in some cases, I just looked at my property tax bill, my assessed value is less than 50% of what the county thinks I can sell my house for. And that is not atypical in Portland. It also created temporary levies that are now called local option rather than serial levies. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. And because of the dispute between Sizemore and McIntyre and the fact that the legislature was terrified of both of them, it decided that it couldn't repeal measure five because that would piss off McIntyre. So they kept it. Okay, so get your head around that. We now have a rate based system on assessed value and a rate based limit on real market value. And you have to comply with both.
And we will talk, we'll show how that plays itself out in the future slides. So I'm going to try to show a video that the rumor has it that this was how the math was done back when measure 50 was being put together. Hopefully this will come through okay.
No, no, look, Ma, I mean, because I'll prove it to you. I'll put down four, five 14s here, 14, 14, 14. There, now, now I'll prove to you by position that five 14s is not 25. Four, eight, twelve, sixteen, twenty. Four, eight, twelve, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, five.
There you are. And I brush up, Billy, and I want to see you for cheating.
Okay, so whether that was really how they did the math or not, it has gotten to us, got us into a really weird place. Uh, as Carol mentioned, Measure fifty created local option levies. And what these are are temporary property tax levies that are voted upon by the voters. You can go out for a maximum of ten years for capital needs and five years for operations. You can levy these on a fixed dollar amount. So you could say we're going to levy you at twenty thousand dollars or you can do it at a fixed rate per thousand, five dollars per, per thousand of assessed value. Uh, it does require voter approval. It's in addition to the permanent rates. When there is compression based upon these rates going up and over those uh, Measure five limits, the uh, local option levies are compressed first and then the permanent rates are levied. And I did actually get the nineteen-twenty numbers. I didn't get this slide change, but in the fiscal year nineteen-twenty, seven point nine percent of all taxes imposed were local option levies. As I said, they, all these levies are still subject to those Measure five limits. So it's just a, a little chart of how these property tax limits are handicapping our, uh, some of the districts out there on our local option levies. The Pendleton School District has a levy, a local option levy, and they're losing sixty-two point four percent of that levy to compression. Uh, in my area, what we like to call the Twalton Tiger School District, but it really is the Tiger Twalton School District. They lose almost one quarter of their whole levy to compression. And you could see that the city of Albany loses uh, ten, almost ten and a quarter percent of your, what you're imposing to compression. So you're getting less than ninety percent of what you're, you're levying. And Lynn County is at about eight point three-five percent lost to compression. Some of the impacts that Measure five, did someone have a question? Okay, uh, some of the impacts that Measure fifty created was that divergence of assessed value and real market value that Carol discussed and I'll, I have a, a slide and a, a graph of that. And it created this thing called maximum assessed value and that's that three percent growth. And then it will, you could have a divergence of AV and, and the maximum assessed value, but that's a, we'll get into that a little bit more later as well. It created a number of inequities across the state. Uh, it, it created inequities in the permanent rates of districts, cities, counties. There's inequities in all those special districts. They all have different rates. Uh, there was inequities in that base year that because they took a snapshot in time of values and levies, it created uh, inequities of that from that year. Uh, property to property. We had inequities with two different properties, uh, different neighborhoods having inequities. And then business to business. Also, there are some inequities and I have examples of many of these. And it created the concept of compression. Uh, and I'll make your head spin on that one a little bit later. So the divergence of assessed value and real market value, you'll see, and this may be a little hard to see, but that the, they were both assessed value and market value were the same up until ninety-six, ninety-seven. We had that drop from market value by ten percent to create assessed value. That blue line on the bottom is the growth of assessed value at the approximate three percent. And that dotted red line is market values across the state. And you can see how, you know, they kind of steadily went up. We saw a, a big spike there in the, the early two thousands. And then of course the housing bubble dropped this back down and then since thirteen, fourteen, we've seen it uh, continually rise again. But you can see those gaps between market value and assessed value. And that will factor into some importance when we do compression calculations. And when I talk about that in a, in a few slides.
Terrible, terrible, terrible.
So going back to, to Carol's example and that permanent rate impact, uh, the pre-Measure fifty rate, the, the example she was showing you was seven dollars and fifty cents for the city, six dollars and sixty-seven cents for the county. The new permanent rates that went into place, you can see were less by fifty-nine cents or about fifty cents for each entity. And what that uh, equated to in revenue was a drop for the cities about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and about three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the county.
This isn't fair.
But here's, there are uh, nine cities in the state of Oregon out of two hundred and forty-one. There's only nine cities between twenty-five thousand and forty thousand. And they're listed here and these are all full-service cities. Uh, there are a couple in here that do have fire departments where some are part of fire districts. But you can see the different uh, permanent rates that were in place. You know, just in my area, uh, Lake Oswego, Oregon City are both over five dollars per thousand. I'm at just over two twenty-six per thousand. And then you've got Oregon, again, uh, Oregon, like McMinnville down at five. So this, we're all providing pretty much the same services uh, at full, at completely different rates. Uh, there are some cities that don't even levy their full permanent rate. For the example, the city of Beaverton, uh, one of my neighbors is over four dollars per thousand. They do not levy their full rate. I would love to have that problem. Uh, but I need my whole two twenty-six, sixty-five in order to have our operations. Uh, counties, this, I know this is really hard to read, but it'll have a, a slide that like the last one. But you could see that these are the Oregon counties, the thirty-six counties. And you can see the wide variance and discrepancies of the permanent tax rates amongst counties. Anywhere from the hides of Sherman and Wheeler County of over eight dollars and fifty cents per thousand down to the Curry and Josephine Counties that are about sixty cents per thousand. And these, as Carol mentioned, are permanent rates. They can't change them. Uh, we've seen some uh, attempts at local option levies down in Josephine and Curry County. They can't get those passed, which has had a major impact on sheriff services and other services the county provides. The base year inequities that we talked about, again, it created that split role. So now each uh, each property has a real market value and an assessed value assigned to it. And the assessed value was that ninety-five, ninety-six, uh, market value less ten percent. And there is that strict limit of three percent on growth. Inequities that existed at that time were locked in. So if you had a real market value that was either too high or too low, now that assessed value was either too high or too low. Those were, those inequities that we had inequities in the system at the time and now they were locked in and are creating other inequities in our system. Uh, prior to Measure fifty, there was a six-year reappraisal cycle. Uh, so the assessor's office had uh, six parts of the city and they divided them up and they assessed one-sixth every year. So in ninety-six, ninety-seven, depending on where you were in that cycle, if the property had just been reassessed or reappraised, it was likely going to have a higher market value than a property that may have been next door, but was appraised three years ago. And so it created those inequities that were again locked in when Measure fifty passed. Instead of transferred into that calculation and it continued on to perpetuity, it's, we're dealing with it today. There's no changes. We'll deal with that ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Carol mentioned the change property ratio and that's the ratio of assessed value to real market value. When a property goes on the rolls, it is at that uh, change property ratio countywide. Multnomah County in the last, well, actually the city of Gresham in a couple sessions ago got the statutory change on this where they are allowed to choose between the citywide CPR or the countywide CPR. And the reason they asked for that change was in, we'll just show here uh, that the second from the, the right there, uh, Multnomah County is at forty-nine percent for residential. Gresham CPR is sixty, almost sixty-three percent. So where properties, residential properties before that legislative change were going on at fifty percent of value, they were now able to put those same properties on at sixty-three percent. That has not, that statute has not been changed uh, to allow any others yet. Uh, I haven't talked to the league or anybody to see if that's on the uh, on the horizon in this next legislative session or not. That would be good because uh, you, for example, uh, in Washington County, I'm stuck with the sixty-one point six percent CPR for new residential property. And number of years ago, I calculated in Twalton, I think we're more in the seventy to eighty uh, percent. And so I would have, I'm losing value in property tax revenue by having to use the countywide CPR. During the, the housing crash or bubble bursting back in two thousand eight, two thousand and ten, these are real-life examples of what happened in Deschutes County. Uh, you can see there the, the major dip in the real market value. And when it actually crossed the gold line there of the assessed value that had been growing, it, market values actually dropped below assessed values. So that lower amount became the assessed value and that's what the taxes were being calculated on. And that continued to drop for a few more years. And then you see in the twelve, thirteen year, it started to go back up. Now, people were used to their property taxes going up on the residential side by three percent. That growth in twelve, between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen was more about a six to seven percent increase. So people saw their taxes increase by that because it'll grow whatever percentage it is that year until it crosses over that assessed value line, again, which you see happen in twenty-fourteen. So a lot of data. I'm going to pause for a minute, let that all, all sink in, all my graphs and numbers and charts before I get into some others. So let's talk about some of those inequities. These are some charts that the League of Oregon Cities put together a few years back. And they, they still hold true today, but here's two houses that in mid-two thousand thirteen sold for about one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. One was in a, you know, in different parts of town, not far away. I think I calculated they're about a mile to two miles apart. Uh, because of the assessed value difference, one, two houses, the same market value, same sale prices. One is paying thirty-two, thirty-three hundred dollars in property taxes. The other homeowner is only paying twenty-three hundred dollars. But a thousand dollar difference in their property tax bills, all because you can see the real market value in nineteen ninety-seven was significantly different. Very, two very similar homes sold for the same amount. Uh, in Portland, again, you've got a house in southwest Portland, in a more established neighborhood. Uh, a house in northeast Portland, which is in a gentrified area. They both sold in two thousand thirteen for three hundred and twenty-five thousand. But you can see there's about a thirty-four hundred dollar difference in their property tax bills uh, back in, I believe this was fifteen, sixteen. Again, you can see the huge discrepancy in the market values back in nineteen ninety-seven, which was what was used to set those assessed values. And if you look, they're always six point six miles apart. But two completely different areas. Uh, this is just another example of the neighborhood by neighborhood uh, examples. The established neighborhood on the top section there had a much higher assessed value uh, because of the values that were in place in ninety-seven. You can see the real market values are about the same, but the block, uh, the established block receives a discount of about thirteen to twenty-five percent off their tax rate when it's applied to the market value where the gentrified area, because the assessed value was so low, there's about a seventy-three to eighty-two percent discount in essence on these properties. Again, very similar uh, market values, very similar neighborhoods, just ones in a more established area versus an older gentrified, more gentrified area. This is not just residential properties that has these inequities. It's happening between businesses. Uh, two similar gas stations up in the Portland area. One on the, more on the south end of town is paying seventeen, almost eighteen thousand dollars of taxes uh, for a one point four million dollar business. And gas station B, which is up more, uh, more towards the north end of, of town, is only paying sixty-seven hundred dollars in taxes. Again, very similar uh, side or market values of one point four million dollars. So we saw, we're seeing inequities, property by property, neighborhood by neighborhood. It's into the businesses across uh, the state. We are seeing these types of inequities that have been created by Measure fifty. Deep breath time. Are we ready for compression? Anybody? Nobody? Well, we're going to give it to you anyway.
Oh, I wish you'd explain it to me sometime, buster.
Compression will make your head spin. You're ready? Carol, you've been ready for years. You, you created part of this problem, Carol. Uh, it, it is a uh, concept that is very difficult for most people to, to wrap their head around. Once you start to see the pieces of it, it starts to make a little more sense, but it, it is also one of those things that uh, it, in a lot of ways, doesn't make sense, but this is something that the assessor's office goes through on a property by property basis. There are a couple of different types of compression. One is the rates. We talked about the Measure five uh, rates, the five dollars per thousand for education, the ten dollar per thousand limit for general government. Uh, and then those are affected by additional levies that are put on the rolls, local option levies that add to those uh, to the tax rates. New special districts will add. And the other is value compression. I showed you this chart a few minutes ago. And that gap between real market value and assessed value, there, it is possible to have a tax rate higher than five dollars per thousand or higher than ten dollars for thousand for general government and not be put into compression. And that is what we call value compression. It's based upon that gap between AV and RMV, which can allow the, that higher rate. Again, the hierarchy here is that local option levies are reduced first. If you have more than one local option levy in a tax code, then they are reduced proportionately. And that's the situation that Albany and Lynn County find themselves in. If compression exceeds all the local option levies, so they drop all local option levy revenue on that property to zero. Then they started going proportionally into the uh, permanent rate. Uh, urban renewal is compressed with general government permanent levies. So if you have an urban renewal district, that tax rate for urban renewal is included in the general government category. You can see the compression losses. Uh, we, we had a high there in thirteen, fourteen of over two hundred million dollars of uh, value of revenues lost to compression. But we started seeing some improvements to those numbers and we last, this, uh, lasting nineteen twenty, we started seeing compression grow again from a hundred and nineteen million dollars of value lost revenues nineteen twenty, we are now losing statewide and all across all districts, taxing districts, over a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars of property tax revenue that's lost due to compression. So I'm going to go into an example uh, to help, hopefully help uh, put this into some perspective. This is tax code oh-eight, oh-one for the city of Albany. And not everybody looks at their property tax statement. If you were to look at your property tax statement, you would see all these taxing districts listed out. On the general government side, you have the city of Albany at their six dollar, over six dollar permanent tax rate. You have a dollar fifteen uh, local option levy. Lynn County has a dollar seventeen, almost dollar eighteen permanent rate. The two local option levies for about two dollars and ninety-three cents of local option levies. You have a four-H extension district and then your urban renewal district for a general government rate of twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. On the education side, you've got the school district's permanent rate. You've got the educational service district's permanent rate and then Lynn Benton Community College for a total uh, for education in this tax code of five dollars and seven cents. So let's talk about how then compression is calculated. And this is calculations that the assessor's office has to do for every individual property. So let's assume that property A has a market value of two hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars and an assessed value of a hundred and eighty-four thousand. Property B has the exact same market value, but their assessed value is higher at two hundred and forty thousand. The first calculation, oh, I'm sorry, let's go back. The, the education levy rate as from the last slide is that five dollars and seven cents plus for education and twelve dollars thirty-two cents for general levy or the general government. So the first thing the assessor's office does is they calculate the measure five limits. The measure five limits are on real market value. So you have five dollars per thousand of the real market value of two hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred. So the maximum amount of taxes that this property at this market value would pay for education is one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. They do the same calculation on the, for the general government side, the ten dollars per thousand. So the most this property could pay for general government services is two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The assessor then figures out the tax burden, and this is based upon assessed value. So here they take that education rate and they multiply it by the assessed value of a hundred and eighty-four thousand. So it's five dollars six per thousand. So this property is paying a little over nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for education. Do the same calculation on that general rate. The tax burden is two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, I think. I don't have my glasses on. Anyway, then they compare those two rates. In this case, the tax burden is less than the measure five limit for both education and general government. So this property is not under compression. Property B, we go through those same calculations. So the measure five limit calculation is exactly the same. The tax burden though is a little different here because it's based upon the two hundred and forty thousand dollar assessed value. So the taxes, tax burden on this property is all over twelve hundred dollars for education and about twenty-nine, over twenty-nine hundred dollars for general government. When you compare those, now you see that for education, the burden is less than the limit, but in the general government side, it is not. So this property would be in compression by a hundred and eight dollars for general government services. Does that make some semblance of sense? And it said, this has to, the assessor's office will go through this calculation for every individual property. Now, the interesting part beyond that property by property calculation is that you could have one neighbor. So those two houses that I just showed could be next to each other. And one would be compression and one would not. So you get into the ballot, let's say for a local option levy. And the neighbor who is in compression may vote for that and not have to pay it. The neighbor who did not vote for it because their house is not in compression, they are paying that levy in full due to the way that the system is set up. The other thing that happens is maybe you don't like your neighbor and your house is compressed. And you're voting for something because entities have to, in many cases, go out then and charge a higher, go out for a higher local option levy than they need to compensate for compression. In the city of Albany, I, a few years back, did that, where raised your, your levy, your local option levy from ninety-five cents per thousand to a dollar fifteen to compensate or to attempt to compensate for that loss of compression to net out the ninety-five cents per thousand. Unfortunately, what happened in your case is that did not come to fruition and you were still compressed and did not get to that ninety-five cent per thousand net amount. So you could, as I said, if you're not voting for something or you vote for something, you're not paying it. You're kind of forcing your neighbor to pay it at a higher amount than they would have if it were not for compression. The other thing that happened, happens in these cases is when you go to the ballot, you're making an assumption on values based upon what you think assessed and market values are gonna look like and what compression may be. So in this case, this article that was in the Oregonian back in two thousand twelve, the Multnomah County had a library levy. And they had promised that if the levy was passed, that they would keep the, the doors open full time, more hours in the library every day of the week. And what happened then, when it got passed, is because of the impacts of compression, they were not pulling in the revenues that they were projecting and they were unable to keep those promises. They had to lock the doors. In some cases, they had shorter hours. Like there was one day a week, they were not even opened. And this article talks about this poor family brought their granddaughter to the, to the library thinking it was gonna be open and the doors were locked. And you can see it passed with eighty-four percent of the vote. Those are popular levy, but they could not live up to the promises based upon compression. As Carol mentioned, it, it's now starts creating competition between taxing districts. What we see in some areas is that as cities or counties can't provide the services at the levels they want to. So that ends up, what happens is a special districts spins off from that for that purpose. In Toowalatin and Tigard, our school district was unable to operate their pools any longer with the, the financial situation they were in. This was six, seven years ago. So they spun off a aquatic district at nine cents per thousand. So they have their own permanent rate now. Well, that gets added on. The city's permanent rate didn't change. The school district's permanent rate didn't change. Now you have this aquatic district that's adding to existing permanent rates out there. So you start competing against each other by adding special districts and getting those tax rates higher. This is kind of where we get into your situation. So Lynn County voters, they pass the local option levy in ten, renewed in twenty fourteen. I don't know exactly where that's at now. I've heard that they're looking to renew one of their big levies here shortly. They are losing two and a half million dollars of their two local option levies to compression annually. I talked about your situation with that ninety-five cent jump from ninety-five to a dollar fifteen. In nineteen twenty, you lost a little over ten percent of your levy to compression. You were losing four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of your levy to compression in nineteen twenty. Five point eight percent of all taxes extended by Lynn County are lost to compression. We had a question when we were asked to do this presentation. If Lynn County were to increase their levy, what impact would that have on Albany's levy? And while we don't have a total dollar amount because it's, because it is a property by property calculation, using that example I, I gave a few minutes ago where there was a dollar eight of general government compression happening. If Lynn County took their levy, their two dollar and eighty-three cent levy, it is in existence now, and increased it to three dollars per thousand, the impact of that on that property would be an increase of revenue to Lynn County by ten dollars and sixty-eight cents on that property. Albany, you would lose nine dollars and eighty-two cents off your levy on that same property. Because that increase in revenue there, it, it creates that imbalance that they're taking from you and, and feeding them to get a higher levy amount. So while I can't tell you what it would be on a, every property, just using that example I gave earlier, that's, you would lose about ten and they, you'd basically be giving your ten dollars to Lynn County. The city of Sweet Home is kind of in the poster child for the League of Oregon Cities for years. They were put into a real strange situation based upon those serial levies and the local option levies back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six and the ninety-seven election. They had a serial levy that was expiring. The, the voters passed a local option levy in nineteen ninety-seven to continue that serial levy that had been going for a number of years for police and library services, very popular levies. They were not subject to that reduction and that local option levy was not subject to reduction and that was not included in their permanent tax rate. What ended up happening was they fell into this gap when their temporary levy had expired and the new local option levy had not started yet. So the, the temporary levy that was in place was not included in their, their permanent rate calculation, nor was that local option levy. So their allocation of taxes were less, but what happened was their overlapping taxing districts got more. And again, it's that playoff of each other that was happening. So the city was benefiting from the higher temporary revenues due to that local option levy, but the permanent rate was lower because of that serial levy not being included. Again, the effect was they were getting higher taxes, but they were paying the lower permanent rate. The legislature was able to partially fix that unintended result of the overlapping taxing districts being benefiting at a higher permanent rate. They were able to change that, but they had no constitutional authority to reduce. They had it to reduce, but they did not have the authority to increase Sweet Home's tax rate. So the overlapping districts were put in the right spot. But because the legislature didn't have the constitutional authority to raise Sweet Home's levy to where it should have been, they were stuck, they're stuck with a dollar forty-two per thousand permanent rate. As I said, they have been funding library and police since nineteen eighty-six. They increased their levies in the November twenty fifteen election with that same hope of getting more revenue there. So what happened is their police and levy or police and library levies increased and the Lynn County sheriff's levy and the veterans home levy decreased. So what I was talking about with the properties with, if Lynn County were to increase their levy. So in twenty nineteen, the League of Oregon Cities had legislative priorities around property taxes. This was, this came out of the Finance and Taxation Committee and then was approved as a priority by the League of Oregon Cities Board. And what the advocacy was, was for both comprehensive and incremental property tax reform. Because measure five and measure fifty are embedded in the state constitution, any changes to the property tax system, except for some very minor tweaks, everything else would have to go to a vote of the people, be changed in the constitution. So the League of Oregon Cities was advocating for supporting legislation to achieve equity such as a transition to a market-based value, tax value system again. Again, that's a property constitutional referral. We were asking for enhancement of fairness and adequacy in our system. There are some minor statutory changes that could happen to, to help that. And then to restore choice and to allow voters, go back to that local choice situation and allow, be able to establish tax rates outside of their current limits. Again, because this is embedded in the constitution, requires a constitutional referral and a vote by the people. The twenty nineteen legislative session, there was not a lot of focus on property tax revenues and property tax system because of the focus on the corporate activity tax on the education funding side. Though we did get a bill introduced, SJR twenty-one was a referral to move measure fifty from the constitution to statute. And therefore, changes to the property tax system could then be made in statute if they addressed inequities in the system. So it wouldn't just be a simple carte blanche to make any changes. But if they were to address inequities in the system, it could be done statutorily and not by a constitutional amendment. It had a hearing, it had a work session. There is growing interest and support at the legislature level and the governor for property tax or looking at property tax system. I've been doing this, Carol's been doing this since the nineties. I've been doing this since about two thousand eight. We have seen shifts in the legislature of one year, we start getting traction on comprehensive reform. Some years we get some traction on piecemeal reforms, but we just haven't gotten to anywhere yet. Doesn't mean we shouldn't keep trying. I've got, stop, cut, cut over the twenty nineteen. There were some wins that cities had mostly around property tax exemptions. What's your next step? We have a mission for you if you choose to accept it. Continue to support property tax reform, focusing on those inequities and the need for local choice. Continue to oppose property tax exemption mandates. The legislature will pass, pass property tax exemptions. A lot of them sound really good and a lot of them are in a lot of ways good. But they are mandated on our revenues and we don't have a choice in those. Your council might consider passing a resolution supporting reform. I, I ask any of you that are interested, write opinion editorials, talk to your legislators. They're the ones with their, the boots on the ground in the capital. Talk to them, get them to understand the system and find out what they can do to help us on this. The, these start out in the committees. So support the revenue committee chairs. Senator Burdick is the Senate Revenue Committee Chair and Representative Nathanson is on the, the House side. Meet with them early, meet with them often. The, the more opportunities we can get to explain the inequities and the needs for reform, the better off we are. That's all we have as far as the presentation part. Hopefully you're still all awake. Here's our contact information. If you have a questions after this and that this will be more than happy, I'm sure Carol will be too to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you, Dawn, and thank you, Carol. And cheerful, and if, if it's okay with you, Matt, continue on with just a short update from the city manager. We'll keep that relatively short.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, again, I wanted to thank Carol and Dawn for their presentation. It was very enlightening to me the first time and again the second time. And I don't know if any of us could describe compression now as effectively as you have. But I'm sure we all came away with a, a much better understanding. It remains to be seen what effects compression will have on us in future years. But we know that it's affecting us now. Way back in July, I presented to the council on expected reductions in service levels in the next biennium. And these estimates were based on department directors' appraisals of cuts that would have to be made if revenues were limited to what is currently available. We're a little further down the road now, four months closer to building the budget for the next biennium. And I'd like to take the opportunity afforded by this work session to provide an update on what faces us and what we're doing now to prepare. PERS rates, the subject of conversations quite a bit, and perhaps we'll hear from Carol a little bit later in a couple of months, are the second biggest driver in personnel costs. And we understand that they'll remain flat over the next biennium, which is a piece of good news compared to what we had heard at about thirty-three percent of payroll. Employer paid insurance costs for employees, the third biggest driver in personnel costs. Won't be completely clear until April, but we'll make the best educated guess we can as we start the budget process at about fifteen percent. Last week, we learned that assessed value has increased just under five percent overall. And this again is a little piece of good news. It'll positively affect our ending fund balance. But a word of warning, we may yet see decreased values in, in subsequent years. And as you've just seen, just heard, the effects of compression from a potential increase in the Lynn County levy this, in a couple of weeks, may also have a negative effect on revenues in the out years. We know that COVID is with us for a while. We know that the economy is not doing as badly as had been expected. But we also know that many in our community and around the nation are suffering. Though we don't yet have census numbers for twenty twenty, we know that the city has grown at a steady pace and continues to grow. While state policymakers continue to add to the list of compliance requirements, unfunded mandates, as you know them. This is not always the case, and we have to, to be honest, This is not always the case and we have to, to be honest, uh recognize when we receive grants to help. And we recently received a grant to help comply with H B two thousand and one, but it is often the case. We know that demands for service continue to grow. We suspect that property tax revenues will increase, but not at a rate sufficient to meet the demand for service. We've received a very welcome infusion from CARES Act funds. But these again are one-time funds and we've most recently begun work on building a city services utility. Staff have long been implementing cost-saving measures and efficiencies, but with the funding levels we're anticipating, reductions in service and programs across the city will be necessary. In anticipation, we've reduced F T E and consequently we've had to reduce some services as we prepare for the next biennium. We continue to look for ways to be more efficient and to prioritize, but inevitably services will have to be cut. A hiring chill, not a freeze, but a chill was implemented last year and it's still in effect. As positions come open due to retirement or resignation, often they're not being filled. Our aquatics manager, uh one of two fire and life safety positions, a position in G I S, a position in the library, among others. This is done in order to avoid layoffs wherever possible. We've chosen not to fill the positions knowing these constraints were imminent. It's important to note, as we did in July, that we're talking again tonight only about the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Central Services Fund, which make up about thirty-three percent of our current biennial budget. Okay, we identified a shortfall uh of approximately five and a half to six million in the general fund, which would require workforce reductions. Um you've heard figures around thirty F T E, but that, as you've seen, we've had recent good news and I'm hoping that as we make adjustments, as we get closer to the budget build, those numbers will come down. Uh reductions have been made in, in the city manager's office, in I T, in finance, in H R. And rather than repeat the impacts on the services that the city provides, as we did in July, let me just note that the service reduction cuts represent will have meaningful community impacts. And the impacts include not only service level reductions, but also opportunity costs. Costs of not doing some things. And it includes elevated risk. You've heard the term risk quite often. Much of what we do is to protect against losses or hazards that might happen. A higher level of risk is often what we incur if we can't afford a certain level of protection. It doesn't necessarily mean that the consequences will happen, but it does mean that the probability goes up. And we need to be conscious of accepting that risk. Risk includes not only operational risk, but also legal risk and workforce risk. The reductions in service for which we're preparing are spread out across the whole. Directors and I have prioritized within and across departments, but the problem affects every department and every service we provide. As I've noted, we've already begun to reduce staffing through attrition. But also, and unfortunately with a few necessary layoffs. As we look further down the road, additional cuts will be necessary. This will result in further F T E reductions. In some of our functions, this could threaten base levels of service of service, such as keeping a fire station or the Carnegie Library or the senior center open. This is the problem with a system that is out of balance. So what do we do about it? We continue to seek efficiencies and innovation wherever possible. And we continue to evaluate every program and expense we have. But this isn't enough. The council has considered alternatives for containing costs and increasing revenues and narrowed down the remaining options to a utility fee. On September twenty-first, council authorized us to proceed with the building of a utility. To use the analogy that I have taken to using, we'll build a vehicle that can be immediately driven or stored in the garage until the decision is made to drive it. We've engaged Deb Galardi of Galardi Rothstein Group to assist us. And on Wednesday this week, we'll ask for council authorization to contract with her to perform a utility fee study. This study will evaluate potential fee structures and levels in the context of the city's funding goals and other considerations such as billing capabilities. Galardi will help to develop recommendations for the council and will identify potential options to balance rate equity, defensibility and administration. They'll develop a model to perform the rate calculations for selected rate structures. And the model will allow for modification of fee levels and scaling between rate classes to evaluate impacts on ratepayers and different customer types or tiers. They'll prepare sample monthly bills to illustrate impacts. And they'll develop a transition plan to phase the new rates in over a multi-year period. The party will attend our city council work sessions, a few of them in a public hearing, and they'll meet separately with other stakeholders to discuss study findings and recommendations. They will assist with development and review of customer education information, including the F A Qs and other information for our website and other media. Many other Oregon communities have taken similar steps to address similar shortfalls. Utility fees have been implemented to provide funding for public safety, parks and other city services. And communities are attracted not only by the fact that they will be able to continue to provide certain services, but also by the fact that a utility fee provides a more stable and predictable source of funding along with direct oversight and control of rates. So in closing, just want to point out uh that the construction of this city services utility is a preparatory work. It's work that needs to be done to present the council with a tool that can be used, should they, should they choose to use it. But of course, it does not get implemented until, if and until uh they make that decision. And Chair Folden, with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have. And uh Sue, I think you're, I don't know if your phone is.
You're not coming through, Sue.
Okay, conference lady says I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I don't know why there was a delay between when I pushed the button, but um so you mentioned um some July meeting where some service cuts were um listed or, or mentioned. Is that um something that the rest of the budget committee could see?
Oh, certainly, yes. And if you'll recall, uh last fall, summer, fall, uh the council went through an exercise looking at uh cost containment measures and revenue enhancement measures. And uh when we got to the end of that exercise, we talked about this utility fee. And the council's feeling at the time was that they needed to see what exactly would be the cost of not having that revenue, what services would be lost. So I was on the hook to provide that presentation. And then uh along came a pandemic and that presentation was postponed until July. Uh and in July, we went ahead and did it. I, I'm fairly certain it's taped and it can be viewed.
Okay, maybe you just let, let us know the meeting date and we can find it on, online if we want to.
You bet. And I think Matt might be looking it up right now.
Okay. Are there other questions for Peter?
Hi, this is Carrie Vernon. I, I kind of a kind of a similar comment to Sue. I'd like to see something in writing that we could actually review.
Okay.
Out of material to digest.
Yeah, I'll send you, I can send you the whole uh presentation from, from that July session.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So the, the PERS update that we didn't have, um do we have a plan for our next meeting where we would be seeing that?
I would, I would uh ask Gina Jaeger to comment on whether she's actually set a date with Carol. But uh as you can see, tonight would have run over our two hours if we'd have kept on with PERS. Uh Carol is a, is an expert on PERS as well. And you know, I don't know if you settled on a date or we just in concept thought about January?
We have not thought about, we have not settled on a date yet, but we were thinking January might be a good time to go over that before we start the budget process.
So normally in January, we're, we meet and we talk about um maybe the, the update on where we are um in this current budgeting biennium as far as actual results to budget. Um and uh we get input from the city manager on um what he sees coming down the road and we give staff some direction before we start before they start really pulling the budget together. Is there room in a meeting like that to do the PERS update as well?
I think there would be. Um we would probably want to schedule about the same amount of time. So it could be a lengthy meeting, but um that would probably be a good opportunity to do it.
All right. Any other questions or items for tonight?
Sue, my apologies for not showing my camera, but believe me, you don't want to, you don't want to see. And we have the date, um the date for that uh July session was July twentieth.
Okay. Great. Okay, well, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see some of you.
You too.